Two different times than probably because when we come back, the folks that assumed it would be kind of later day. It's my understanding.
Yeah, it's part of the conversation.
Do you have a anticipated length of executive session?
Uh, annoying my colleagues. I do not have an anticipated length.
I, I would, we have, we have generally done executive session in advance of the entire board meeting, which is usually, I know beneficial to me, but if in the, if in the interest of people here, we could do our best to keep it brief and not let it run to an hour or more, I would strongly support that.
Uh, I would, I would hopefully tell us to come back at seven o'clock at the latest, if not before then, if we are. We can always go back to executive session. And we will, I'll hold that until we get back. Additional questions, debates, discussion.
I think it's something that we should consider another time, that not everyone's here, even the ones that are signed up.
And what I would just add is the current board president, that policy, uh, I forget the number about our agenda meetings. It's been on the policy committee's agenda for some time to think about how we are much more inclusive to community members, to students, to teachers, and trying what the order of our views would be so we can entertain those conversations. So with that being said, I'll call the question if that's okay from colleagues, all in favor, all opposed. You have recorded and Eldridge is not present. He's here, but just not anyone. Fantastic. Uh, welcome everybody. We are gonna call our meeting, well, not the order, we're back from executive session. I just want to make sure that folks know that I have hurt my back. So if you're saying things and I'm making faces, it has nothing to do with what you're saying. I want to make sure that we understand that forward. First agenda item is possible approval or modification of the agenda.
Uh, so I would like to add two modifications to the agenda, move to add to the consent agenda, consideration of accounts, item six point one two, resolution to accept letter of recommendation for Northeast Elementary Courtyard Project Contract and, uh, consideration of accounts, item six point one three, resolution to accept letter of recommendation for ICSD stage one A EV bus contract, EV being electric vehicle.
By Pat, second by Chris. Conversation or discussion? All in favor? All opposed? There we go. So Trish, you got those. We're gonna move those forward. That is gonna bring us to the public comment period. As a reminder, folks have three minutes of time to speak. There will probably be a, an alarm that goes off. If you're close to the end, of course, we'll let you finish. Um, and kindly to remind all forces we do before public comment that the board cannot and will not discuss any individual district personnel by name or by title, nor will we discuss any particular students. And so we will proceed. I'll yield to my colleague, Maury Lang. We'll identify folks who would like to speak. If at all possible, folks feel free to speak right where you're at. Stand up and speak. You can come to here to speak as well. And it would be helpful for the public record if you would state your name before you speak, even though we have it here. And we'll apologize in advance for any mispronunciations.
George Tamburelli?
Uh, Tamburelli.
Tamburelli.
Good evening. My name is George Tamburelli. You may have seen my emails that I write. Uh, we have children in Cuba Heights. Um, we've had children in Cuba Heights since 2005. We realized last night, my wife and I, that we will continue to have children in chess until 2031, when our son Eli leaves fifth grade. He's currently in preschool. I'd like to flip the narrative a little bit about what's going on at chess. Imagine if you had a child in a school that turned over 68% of its staff in two and a half years and anticipated losing more teachers in the coming months. If the staff turnover was potentially greater than 100% over three years, would you be concerned enough to advocate for your children as we are doing now? What is your perception of the teacher loss at Cuba Heights Elementary School? And how do you explain the turnover displayed in our spreadsheet? I did email the board the new spreadsheet reflecting the six teacher transfer letters and two retirement letters that were put in today, this week. That will take from 68% up to 96%, I think, of staff turnover by June in the Cuba Heights Elementary School. Percentage of teachers leaving chess far exceeds the loss from any other elementary schools in the district. Can you explain this? We see it's not just a tenured and experienced teachers that are requesting transfers. We are seeing new teachers who started in the past two and a half years now asking for transfer out of Cuba Heights Elementary School. How do you explain that the teachers who are requesting transfer are staying in the district? They only want to leave the school, not the district itself. We are hearing today that there are eight teacher transfer requests and two teacher retirements that were submitted this week. That would mean 95% of staff turnover in three years. Do you have a plan to replace these teachers and onboard the new ones? With your lack of action, after repeated emails and knowledge that this is going on, I feel you've broken faith not only with the children and parents, but also with the teachers in this school district. This entire experience has left me physically and mentally drained. I feel we are advocating for our teachers and children, but you, the elected members of the board and the administration of this district can clearly see the turmoil happening in our schools and not taking any actions to fix the problem. I feel that my children and the dedicated teachers at Cuba Heights Elementary School are being abandoned and that we as parents have nowhere to turn. We've been trying to address the teacher loss for two years before it reached the crisis it is now. Please help us, help our children. Thank you.
Nathan Goldman.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Nathan Goldman. I'm here as a concerned parent of multiple children within the Cuba Heights Elementary School. I recently learned of severe staffing concerns within CHES. You've seen the numbers, or I hope you will very soon, which are shockingly clear that something is going wrong. You have seven other elementary schools within the district, which are not having a level of turnover that CHS is experiencing. You can therefore conclude that the problem is not with the district, but the specific school. The first place that I would typically look in a situation like this would be to start with the leadership. The COVID pandemic has affected students and teachers alike everywhere in the world. IfaK is not unique in this. These young children need support and attention as they grow and develop. I'm deeply concerned that CHES is potentially failing these kids if ICSD does not quickly identify the problem and come up with the possible solutions or remedies. A few questions for you. Have you identified that there is a problem in staffing at CHES? What has been done so far to evaluate the staffing situation? Have you spoken to any of the teachers who have resigned or requested transfers? Is my understanding that some of these teachers would be willing to stay if certain changes were made? You've already had to employ teachers without certifications due to staffing shortages. How do you plan on replacing even more teachers? What kind of experience will these new teachers have? Where do you plan on finding them? Is not retention a little bit easier than recruitment? Are these teachers going to be supported so that they and the students can succeed? Or are they doomed to come in and go as is currently happening? Some other questions, but I'm not gonna get to those for now. Um, and then I, there were other concerns as well about, um, how will the district ensure that there will be sufficient aides and special education teachers when these are already understaffed and unable to be filled? If the plan is to increase class sizes, how would this help, you know, the teacher retention or help our students? At the end of the day, we all want what is best for the kids in the community. We can do better than we are currently doing and we need to see some real meaningful change. Thank you.
Stacy.
Ericello.
Ericello.
Ericello. Hello, thank you for your time. My name is Stacy Ericello and I have a statement my husband Sean asked me to share. He wanted to attend the Q and A session at Cuba Heights this evening about the curriculum. My name is Sean Ericello. I'm a parent and teacher in this district. As you know, the total loss of educators is problematic across our district. Our high school students have written about this and their Tattler article. If our teachers are leaving, where does that leave us? It is a powerful and alarming piece. However, something is very wrong at Cuba Heights and we need to figure it out. The total loss in teachers there is far beyond the problems faced anywhere else in the district and cannot be ignored. I'm worried our classrooms won't be staffed with certified, experienced educators. Recent transfer numbers are perhaps the clearest example that this is an issue far beyond those facing the district. One, very specific to Cuba Heights. This year, eight teachers are set to transfer. This means they wish to stay in the district, but not at Cuba Heights. This is about 20% of staff, not including resignations, transfers, or retirement. Why is this? Why are they leaving? What is happening there to drive them away? Please find out and take action. Finding eight teachers will be a nearly impossible task. We fear our son and many children will not have certified teachers in the classroom. Please acknowledge that this is a problem. Please share with the public the steps that are being taken to fix this. In addition, if you could change the structure of board meetings so public comments come before executive meetings regularly. It is difficult to attend these when we don't know the exact time when we can speak. Having the executive meeting after public comments would give the board a chance to discuss the issues that the community has set forth. Thank you so much for your time. The children of our school deserve your attention and swift action towards this matter.
Julie Goddard.
Thank you for your time. I'm Julie Goddard and I'm here to support the teachers and students at Cuba Heights Elementary School called Chess, right? Um, I want to start off with a quick note, just appreciating the implementation of the social justice curriculum. I think culturally responsive teaching is the term, I don't know, in this field. You know, with that whole curriculum, one approach could be assemble the committees and do the polls and sort of this stuff, gather the feedback, and then in 10 years maybe implement something. But I really appreciate and agree with the approach of no, we're doing this because it's essential now and we can course correct in the future if needed. I also want to note that I appreciate that Principal's Hospital Day is, says what she's thinking. Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay. Um, I want to appreciate that.
No titles, no reference to any specific employee.
You got it. I do apologize, sir. I appreciate when individuals say what they're thinking and I appreciate that that means that not everybody's everybody's cup of tea. I can speak about myself. I'm not everybody's cup of tea. I manage a team, right? And sometimes I'll be so very much somebody, not somebody's cup of tea, that they'll choose to leave my team. And that's okay. Likewise, not meshing with somebody's style or whatever, and this, this goes towards the state averages for teacher turnover, which hover around 11% in a given year. The other elementary schools in this district are out of below this figure, which is fantastic. Chess is five times that number. If more than 65% of my team left in a two and a half year period, that would be a new issue. I would then be given an opportunity to change my management or be put in a role where my strengths and talents could best be utilized. And I think there's an opportunity to make sure that everybody's strengths, of which there are many, can be put in the best utilization and that an environment can be created so the teachers want to stay. It's notable to mention that while the other schools have, have much lower turnover, they are having some turnover and it's worth to note that the principals are probably not, I'm sorry, that those schools are probably not trying to help with retention at chess when in fact they're able to backfill their attrition with really seasoned, qualified individuals. Many of the points and questions that I wanted to raise have been, have been raised already. I'm curious about what kind of trainings might be required to promote cultural belonging amongst faculty and staff. I would really like to propose that we get not just some spoken questions, but a dialogue, right? A dialogue where we can have a conversation to understand with whoever investigates teacher turnover, was turnover transparency around understanding what's being done to make sure chess students enter middle school with any chance of succeeding amongst their ICSD users. I have two kids in chess. In their combined 10 years, they've had at least 16 teachers. My younger kid has borne the brunt of it. This year is his first full year of elementary school instruction with the same teacher the entire year. And it's remarkable how that benefited them. My last question is simply, open enrollment is coming soon. I want to keep my kid at chess, but it's getting hard to understand why I should do so. So I thank you for your time and I do apologize.
Zach. Thanks for helping, man. This is Zach Graham.
Pedram? Yeah, Pedram. Thank you. Hi, my, my name is Zach Pedram. Thanks for listening tonight. I have two students at Cuba Heights Elementary, soon to be three, hopefully. I echo the comments of pretty much everyone here tonight so far that has spoken to this, uh, to this problem. Just gonna read a little something. I believe that sometimes people are forced, but people generally choose to retire. People choose to work elsewhere and choose to change their career. But when many people choose to leave one place of employment, it speaks directly to the place that they are leaving. They're likely leaving because they aren't being seen, they likely aren't being heard and are not being known or being treated as valued partners, which is exactly what we guarantee our educators under our new and cycle, ICD Code of Conduct, Teachers Bill of Rights. Something's going on. When educators choose to leave their jobs and change their lives, it's not an easy thing. They gotta leave behind their colleagues that they call friends, they leave behind the families they have seen grow, they leave behind children that they have nurtured and cherished, and they leave behind a community that they have considered a home. It may be a choice, but it's not an easy or frivolous one. It means that after decades of service, both challenging and rewarding, that losing all of these things no longer seems as unlivable as returning to their work environment as it is today. This excruciating choice is happening for educators at Cuba Heights Elementary School, depending on how you measure it, between two and a half times to six times more often than any other elementary school in the district. Six times. This fact, since, um, since I can't say names, I'm gonna skip that bare ground, uh, or at least titles. Many of us have been like addressing the issue through email, um, through in-person interviews. And I will say that like everyone has been, to their credit, very good at listening and trying to hear us out. But some of us have kind of left meetings stopped in our tracks and feeling a bit unheard. So we decided to come here tonight. But I can only imagine how our teachers feel. This year, entire grade levels of educators are planning to request to leave the jobs at Cuba Heights Elementary School. The whole grade, more than one. They leave behind a school that they considered a home, the families they knew, and the children that they cherished. That's all I have to say. Please figure out what's going on.
Lindsay Curse. Hi, um, my name is Lindsay Curse. I currently have two kids, two children at Cuba Heights Elementary School. And, um, I just wanted to add my words to that. I am also very concerned about the teacher loss. I love, I love our school, I love our community. Um, I just was able to go to the Q and A at the school tonight as well. And, and there's a large group of parents there, community, they, they want to help solve this. I hope you could listen tonight and help us. Thank you.
Alex Sheer. Okay.
My name is Austin Fay and I am a third grade teacher at Bell Sherman.
And I'm Alex Shear, I'm a social worker at Bell Sherman, we're the Equity Team Leaders. Sure, I'm Alex Shear and I'm in the social work, one of the social workers at Bell Sherman or the Equity Team Leaders for, represent Bell Sherman. First, I'm gonna read, uh, read a statement from Caitlin Bryant, our library media specialist. And this is from Caitlin. I'm very grateful for the leadership of Cuba Heights when supporting the fifth grade team and when working there. It's because of my experience with, with this, the book group in which was read, the New Jim Crow, professional development of faculty meetings, the numerous one-on-one conversations we had and instructional collaborations we embraced as fifth grade library lessons. That has empowered me to have necessary and important conversations, read alouds about social justice and race with my students and colleagues. I also still work with students that create powerful relationships with students, help them feel seen, heard, included and respected, and help them develop critical thinking skills and empower them to be change agents. This is a joint statement for us.
As Equity Team Leaders for Bell Sherman Elementary School, we would like to use this time to share our praise of many of the current equity initiatives that the district is encouraging, many of which were created and have been supported by the current leadership at Cuba Heights Elementary School. Specifically, this leader has assisted over many years and through many roles in the creation of building equity goals, dissemination of information of the equity report card, consultation, support, and accountability around Black Lives Matter Week at school. And furthermore, this leader has been instrumental in widening.
Please don't refer to any names or any specific initiative.
This initiative has been instrumental in widening the, the equity work in buildings through guidance of the equity mentors across the district and through the creation and implementation of the micro credential, which is a paid opportunity for ICSD staff to engage and work to build skills as culturally competent educators through identity development and culturally responsive teaching practice. These opportunities have helped us reflect as staff members about how to engage, validate, and affirm our students who are most at risk for incarceration and continued oppression. As a woman of color in the equity mentor role here and in other schools and workplaces prior to my coming to this district, my experience is that there is often a ton of support for the work, but there's always discomfort, reactive guardedness, and a feeling of being under constant judgment and distrust when you are leading this kind of work. It is sometimes very lonely to do it, despite it being so needed for all of our students and families and often the responses are automatic and they need support to be revisited and to get reexamined.
At Bell Sherman, we continue to grow as a community and challenge ourselves to reflect on our own personal biases and how not to let them shape our teaching view of students, specifically students of color. We are grateful for leadership's previous role at Bell Sherman as classroom teacher and instructional coach and educating us in the longstanding history of equity work at Bell Sherman and keeping us accountable for continuing. As a white man, I certainly demonstrated my own white fragility, implicit bias, defensiveness, and guardiness when I've been in cross racial conversations that were directly or indirectly related to equity. I've used my power and privilege intentionally and unintentionally to further my status and accomplish my goals. I have a responsibility to continue to reflect on these parts of me and work diligently to redevelop my identity in a way that does not reflect and exacerbate my own racial superiority. If these topics resonate with you and or feel like it's part of the narrative going on in the recent community conversations, we'd be happy to support and facilitate any future dialogue. We continue to be grateful for the equity-related initiatives of the district and Cuba Heights leadership that created and support.
You know, anyone is free to submit to the board clerk, you know, written comments. And what you say here, written, written comments is different from what we can allow you to say in public. Next, I'm gonna ask Dr. Wasim to help me with this one.
Olenna Badamanyuk. Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Olenna. I'm here together with my husband Marco. We are both parents of former Cuba Heights Elementary School student and a current Cuba Heights Elementary School student. And we are here to support teachers and support our students in school. And I really wanna add what was said by parents before, but we are very concerned and alarmed about increasing rates of teachers that are going to include at elementary schools. And, um, you know, we are very puzzled what happened, what's going on, especially considering this full lack of transparency. We don't know. We don't know. We didn't know about the issue of the school administration. We haven't heard about the reason for this school board. And this really opens room to speculation about the toxic nature that's going on in school. And especially considering comments in private from one of the teachers who left the school this year saying that there is toxic nature, toxic environment to school, and this, the teacher was concerned about safety. And the teacher was citing the student of Cuba Elementary School who threatened the teacher and the class to bring arms. And no actions were taken on the part of school administration. This is alarming and concerning. We are concerned about our, our case education and the development of the ratings. The, of the school has dropped the rate from six to four. And we foresee that this trend will continue if no actions are taken. So we are here to ask you to take actions and to look into this issue in depth. Thank you very much.
Marco Badamanyuk.
I wanna take your time. I just want to stay with the, you know, my wife and everybody.
That's all.
Uh, that is, people who are signed up, I want to thank everyone for sharing your comments. I say it regularly that school board meetings unfortunately are not the best place to engage in dialogue. They're usually to conduct the work in the business of the school board. It is a good place to share information and more importantly, our goal is a productive, constructive conversation in the best interest of our young folks. I'm gonna ask my board colleagues if they have any board responses in a minute. But I do want to acknowledge that there is, that there are things taking place. Folks have mentioned before the Q and A that some parents are at that's being moderated. We know that we have meetings that are scheduled and I would, at some point in time, if it's a document, to take a look at an open statement, a joint statement between central office and ICA leadership about what is taking place in the district and the state and the nation. And so there will be certainly more to follow. But with that being said, board members, any responses?
Kind of echoing that, you know, we're getting calls for transparency and dialogue. But you have to understand that much of what we are discussing, much of what plans that we are considering can only be discussed, it cannot be discussed in private. So we can't in public, excuse me. Uh, we can't have the kind of transparency in public at this point because it involves personnel and in some cases, students. And in situations where it may appear that no action has been taken, that is on, certainly on occasions, not the case, that there's actions, but it cannot be discussed publicly.
Other board members who care to respond?
I wanna, I wanna say thank you for coming, because I know it's not easy. Um, and of course I echo what my fellow board members say, there's only so much we can say. But I do want to say that. And of course, I echo what my fellow board members say, there's only so much we can say, but I do wanna say that it's, it's, it's just interesting. I'm so glad you're all are here, and I know how hard it is to come here. And the stories were shared sporadically throughout the year, and then it just feels like the floodgates have just opened. Um, and so I don't wanna make this sound like too little, too late, because nothing ever is. But in the future, you know, there, there's, there's talk, I am the board liaison. I've not been there. I'm, I'm always available via phone. But I physically just, there are not enough hours in the day for me to visit just often. But I think that as a board, we need to do a better job letting y'all know who our liaisons are. So families, teachers, whomever can reach out throughout the year, and we can relay to the rest of us what's going on. And I think as we look to maybe the next year, we can discuss, and again, there's, there's a whole memo out that I still haven't finished reading, talking about doing just this, because it's so important. Because we can't be everywhere all the time. And so your stories mean a lot, and thank you.
I'd just like to make a quick comment, and, and I, I do also appreciate, I always appreciate when families come to us to share their concerns and, and I want you to know that we do always listen. I do always listen, as all of my colleagues have said. Personnel issues and issues regarding individual students, we, we cannot discuss those in public. And, and we cannot be transparent about, oh, we're going to do this to that person. That does not happen. I also want you to know that the board does not employ any employees of this district. We do not have direct jurisdiction over anyone in this district except our superintendent, Dr. Brown, and our wonderful board clerk, Tricia Ferrisburg. Those are the only individuals that we supervise. We set policy, we set budget. We are certainly looking into your concerns, but we, we are not the people who go in and, I mean, your teachers have a contract. They have a union. Administrators have a contract. They have a union. These are, these are labor relations issues. And so the board does not make decisions about employment histories of anyone in this district. That would be wildly inappropriate. I, I just want everyone here to understand that, that I, I personally, I've been on the board for 12 years. I, I often get questions and issues as though we know everything that's going on in every building. We don't know everything that's going on in every building. As Erin says, we have, we've been hearing about your concerns very recently. And I appreciate all the information. But we are our our powers and our responsibilities are rightfully very limited. We are volunteers. We try to do a good job. We, we are not the end decision makers of every, of every issue in this district.
Yes, it is. I, I'd like to, and this doesn't need a response at the moment, but thank you all for coming here. With regard to the projected loss spreadsheet, are these numbers in alignment with what our HR department has? And if not, if it could be sent to them?
That's something we couldn't answer via email. The question is out there. Please send it back our way.
And it's just to, um, if you could just provide more details as to where the source of this data is coming from, that would be appreciative. And copy in our HR director on that email. I'm not sure the person was contacted.
I will add one thing, and I normally don't say this, and this is me speaking out of, not my normal character, but I find one of the comments about the board doing nothing to be disingenuous at best, that there have been multiple meetings, multiple conversations, not saying they've always been the way in which folks want them to happen, but to act as if there hasn't been dialogue, I think is a disingenuous statement to me. I'm looking forward to, at this point in time, I apologize, George, you and I can have this conversation whenever you'd like. I look forward to what these conversations look like from before. We all want what's best for young people, and I'm looking forward to what those look like. We'll move next onto our agenda, which is student reps. Here's a, continue with the meeting. It is a long agenda. My apologies for trying to rein us in. We'll begin with Ithaca High School student reps. What do you have for us today?
We'll start off with school updates in general. The eighth ownership of the catler comes out three days on the 31st. But the IHS musical, The Little Mermaid, will be starting their performance this Friday through Sunday. And the cabaret, the annual performance put on by the IHS registered members of the IHS community, will be happening next month.
Um, we heard the public comment earlier, and we support the efforts to combat high turnover at Higa Heights. On IHS, we've been continuing our leadership summit with Mr. Trumbull, class officers, and other student leadership groups. Um, in the future, we're hoping to expand the summit to include more students with concerns or issues that they want to see addressed. Recently, we discussed grading policies at IHS, especially the elimination of extra credit and minimum grades of forty-five and fifty-five. And we also discussed the new cell phone policy actions.
After a two-year hiatus, Social Justice Week is back with a bang. Last week, presentations, panels, events, and activities were held every day during periods one through seven. Um, the goal of Social Justice Week is to introduce IHS students to diverse perspectives and voices, inspire critical thinking and dialogue about social and political issues. And we invited speakers from Cornell, Ithaca College, and community leaders from Ithaca organizations such as Ithaca Neighborhood Housing, Office of Human Rights for Compton County, and the Ithaca Asian American Association. IHS clubs, teachers, and even some of our board members and espoused presented as well. Some of the clubs who presented were Beauty of Color Club, Saga, Joe Club, who will present here today. And I helped present about sexual violence with SWISS, which stands for Supporting Women Impacting Society. What I think is so great about Social Justice Week is that because of the diversity of presenters, every student has an opportunity to hear about a topic that they care about, that they can relate to, or learn something new, and reflect upon an experience that they didn't know previously. Teachers signed up their, uh, signed up their classes to attend these workshops held in York Hall and Club Auditorium, and many students and teachers enjoyed these presentations and were touched deeply. Personally, I really enjoyed hearing directly about a diverse, a diverse range of important issues. From Mr. Atiba's presentation about hip hop to worldwide human rights. And many students share the same sentiment as well. McHend especially enjoyed Dr. Bradwell's presentation. I'd like to extend a big shout out and thank you to the organizers. I hope I'm not leaking anyone out. Ms. Crawford, Ms. Wheeler, Ms. Stahlmeier, Mr. Kirk, with chemical help from Gio and Zach, as well as the O T acting as the reader. The Sexual Assault and Harassment Committee has been continuing to meet, and we are collaborating with the advocacy center at SWISS to integrate IHS into Take Back the Night, a community event and rally to support survivors and vision and anti-sexual and domestic violence. We are currently planning a pizza and poster making session held at the Coop Lounge before the rally on Friday, April twenty-eighth, and to walk down to the comments together. We hope that these initiatives will further spread a culture of awareness around sexual harassment and assault at IHS. And on another note, I am happy to see the correction up later here on the academic calendar.
Um, you have a long agenda, so I'll keep this brief. High school is so plagued with an epidemic of vaping, the bathroom, simply. We know that it's not just a high school specific thing, and the addiction problem has been widespread. We're working with Mr. Hudson and Mr. Trumbull to help cover that, include very creative solutions and ways to prevent that.
And adding on to that, I think I saw on the agenda, maybe last time, there was something against like a lawsuit against Jewel, possibly. I don't know, like the last action. Okay, yeah, something like that. I was wondering if it helps about that.
Thank you, Ithaca High School. Fantastic. LACS.
Um, so I'll start with Infusion Week, um, which was about two weeks now. Um, and I just like to highlight the work that we did throughout that week. I was extremely grateful to be a part of that planning committee. And our topic this year was the A and LACS, so we focus on our alternativeness and what makes us special, um, as well as what we can do better. We looked over our LACS goals and philosophies, the coalition principles, and the Black Lives Matter toward principles, and saw where they aligned and assigned one of those parents to each period of the day, um, hoping to give every principal an opportunity to be analyzed and to see how our philosophies and goals line up to our practice and what we're doing within our school. We were also lucky enough to have a scribe come from New York and create a piece of artwork based on the work and thinking that we did throughout that week. So yeah, I think it went really well, especially given that it was a little derailed due to snow days. But yeah, it was a very successful and thought-provoking week overall.
Uh, spring, our spring trip, like curriculum is starting for the next quarter, which is next week. We're also dealing with some, we've been recently had a proposal a while ago, it's called Local Board. It's discussing a lot of, you know, it's planned like current board, it's a local board, and it's talking about getting different kind of foods and making food inside our school and having more culinary experience.
Yeah, a big focus on food sovereignty. I'm in this spend committee, but a big focus on food sovereignty and how to get the students involved in our nutrition.
Yeah, so part of it, uh, we previously partnered with companies at the youth farm. Part of this, and we're trying to get some of that back. We're getting some pushback from our head of nutrition right now, um, it's kind of been an issue. But we're working on it, and I just wanna kind of tell, talk about that a little bit. This is something that is super crucial. Our school, um, we love our cafeteria, but there's been a long history of LACS of where we've been really in the kitchen. Maybe we're a place of where we like to make our own food. We like to, you know, have soup and salad along with our school lunch. And we're just, through this committee, we're trying to bring it back, and it's something that we wanna kick about.
Yeah, and I believe also that, you know, implementing this in our building is a start to make it more widespread throughout the district. And I believe that it's a really important issue. Nutrition is at the forefront of how we feel our bodies and how we feel about everything we do.
Yeah, and we turned a lot on our DC trip for facing history in American studies, and it's happening tomorrow. And we're going early because we gotta pack for that. So it's happening tomorrow.
Not well-prepared right now.
Yeah, we're going to remind y'all, we're going to a bunch of different museums, and you know the different museums.
Yeah, we're, I did, we are going to the Holocaust Museum, the African-American Museum, um, as well as the American Indian Museum. We're also lucky enough to have a Capitol tour and a White House tour. So we're really looking forward to that, and also wanna thank you guys and your support.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you so much.
With our funding and the bus, so thank you.
Yeah, it's gonna be amazing trip, and we're super excited. So that's us, yes.
Board responses.
I just have to say, you're so lucky, because cherry blossoms are in.
Yes, we're really excited.
And also the food at the American Indian Museum, you got it.
We're actually really excited about that. We're doing that so well, so we're absolutely nice.
So thanks for highlighting.
Other board responses. Travel safe.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just wanna add, I enjoyed spending time with students at both reviewing your project-based learning activities, and you have a special name for it, which is.
P-BASS.
P-BASS. Got to judge some students who were making some wonderful presentations about a variety of interesting stuff. Boy, did I get schooled. So thank you, but I look forward to, you know, continue to pick back up my work with LACS. I've done a lot of that, and then, of course, the World Hall of Fame, so thanks for the invitation. And, uh, Social Justice Week, had a chance to see that, um, the New York Auditorium in action, and I don't think I've ever been around a screen that big. That was so impressive. But I also learned to appreciate the role of teachers, 'cause I couldn't get two sentences out before the bell rung, and you all had to leave, so I have to continue to work on consolidating what I was trying to share. But thanks for that invitation, too. We do this for you guys. It's, it's best when we can have that interaction. Thank you.
And I just wanna share that my husband was one of the presenters at Social Justice Week, and he had a wonderful time, was really impressed by the students he met and the quality of the interactions. He is an educator who loves sharing information with wonderful students, and he looks forward to coming back again.
Really happy that Social Justice Week is back, because when I was at Ithaca High School, that was a real highlight, and I'm also really glad that after, I don't know how long it's been, but there's gonna be a Take Back the Night rally again. It seems like it's been a while.
Any other board responses? Thank you very much, student reps. Great, we appreciate it. Good luck packing. We will now move to our consent agenda.
I moved the consent agenda for approval of all consent items listed, consideration of account. Personnel reports, students, and minutes of previous meeting as presented.
Second.
Moved by Pat, second by Chris. Discussion, questions, conversation.
There's a lot there. The resolution for the corrective actions for Boyne Middle School just came back to us from audit. It was just duplication, so nothing major there. Special note, and thank you to Emily, if you look at the treasures report. Our agency, we work with one to make, so in light of all the banking uncertainty out there in the world, that all of our accounts that are held are all FDIC insured, and we are protected, so our funds are not at risk for any type of casualty or catastrophic loss. And still continue to see healthy returns on our investments of our cash flow. Everything else is, uh, normal transfer of funds for this time of year. And then we had the, uh, the two adjustments, then to move the secret for electric buses.
So that is it.
I would just like to briefly point out for people who don't go through the entire consent agenda, that this contains a couple of very sizable grants for the Ithaca City School District in excess of one point two million dollars for universal pre-K and over eight hundred thousand dollars for State of New York Title I funds for, for special education. And, um, in, just as a continuation of the, the, the budgetary implications, that means that these, these monies are coming out of the pocket, one of the pockets of the New York state taxpayer and going into the other pocket, so. At least it's our pocket and not just landscape schools. So I'm feeling pretty good about this. At least it's our pocket and not just, um, landscape schools, so I'm feeling pretty good about this.
Yeah.
Additional questions? Call the question hall in favor. I believe that is everybody, unanimous, thanks very much. It brings us to agenda item number 10, the superintendent's report. Very good to see you, Ms. Elvin.
Thank you so much, uh, for having me this evening. I know I have, uh, I have the honor, very rarely to get to sit in this spot. Um, Dr. Brown is very committed, oh, like, very, very committed and comes to every single meeting, so it's been five years, this is only my third time. Second, third time sitting in this, sitting in this place, so, um, big thank you to Dr. Brown who is, um, who was invited to speak at the Ithaca, very prestigious international conference um, about the amazing work that our fabulous kids and staff and community are doing. Um, I just want to have a quick update, if you haven't gotten your tickets yet for The Little Mermaid this weekend, please do so. So it opens on Friday, March 31st. Order tickets in advance, um, and it goes through Sunday, April 2nd, and I will say my four-year-old daughter is so excited to go as is my daughter, so.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. And thank you for our next agenda item for your patience as well. Up next is agenda item 11.1, the IHS Green Outdoor Adventure Team. Well, and though that Coke is awesome, the afternoon from greatest of all time.
Alright, good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to be here tonight. We are looking forward to sharing our passion and ideas today. My name is Anna Cummins and I'm a senior at Ithaca High School.
I'm Rosemary, I'm a junior at Ithaca High School.
I'm Elizabeth and I'm a senior at IHS.
I'm Shasta, I'm a sophomore at IHS.
I'm Galen, I'm a junior, uh, senior at IHS.
And we are all members of Coke. Um, IHS Coke is the Green Outdoor Adventure Team, the merger of the former IHS Green Team and Outdoor Adventure and Climate Action Sustainability Club. We go on weekly walks and talk about the importance of climate solutions and about how we can be more sustainable as a school and as a district. We also plan the annual IHS Climate Action Expo, which will be happening, uh, May 22nd, 21st. Or one of those days, um, this 21st, okay. Um, which is an event, uh, that highlights community organizations that are helping solve the, uh, climate change in many different ways. So we are here because we all care deeply about the safety of Earth's ecosystems, access to important resources for life for all of us, and the tangible steps we can take in improving the climate crisis. And recently, some of us had, uh, the privilege of attending, of attending an inspiring event, yes, um, the Youth Empowerment Sustainability Summit at the Shokin Center through a great IPI and Vicky Armstrong's support and suggestion. And at the summit, we learned from experts and young people about various issues related to addressing climate change, such as energy, food, and fashion. We believe it's necessary to exercise our voices, understanding that we are young, but there's an incredible amount of strength in our passion and that the climate crisis is real and requires urgent action.
In relation to the climate crisis, we recognize and are grateful for the efforts that have already been made within our district regarding climate change and sustainability, including but not limited to the community closet at IHS, environmental education classes such as environmental literature at Ithaca High School, the implementation of electric school buses, use of geothermal energy at Enfield Elementary, district-wide support for green teams, composting programs initiated at some schools, and also working alongside the architectural firm Tetra Tech to determine efficient energy changes to architecture.
As an entire school district, um, there is an incredible capacity to create change both in implementation of climate action and engaging students in education about climate action. We believe that student, staff, and administrators should engage in a partnership to define and implement ongoing sustainability goals. We would also like to see the appointment of a district sustainability director by 2025. Many school districts within New York State have led the way in establishing such positions. A sustainability director and sustainability staff members will be vital in supporting the following measuring, measurable goals that we're really excited. First, we have auditing each school's energy usage. So across the district, most people are not aware of the amount of energy we are using and how much CO2 we are producing as a result. Auditing each school's energy usage using tools such as infrared thermometers and kilowatt meter snapshots would bring awareness to what is using the most energy and where we can implement alternatives that are more energy efficient. For example, in an energy audit at Arlington High School in Lower Grange, New York, students along with teacher Jacob Lawrence found that one air purifier being on for 24 hours resulted in 36 pounds of carbon dioxide being emitted into the atmosphere in one school year. Um, I'm really excited about compost and going, um, implementing district-wide composting and gardening where applicable is um, a project that requires support from staff and schools. Food waste takes up 24.1% of landfill space and when not properly disposed of creates methane, which is 25 times more potent than carbon dioxide. Community gardens teach lessons of care and have very tangible benefits in food output. Like, kind of talking about what Stella and Zara were referring to. There's a beautifully symbiotic relationship between composting and gardening, with benefits for students and schools. Um, since the climate crisis disproportionately affects low-income, black, and indigenous communities uh, in countries in the global south, the fight against climate change is deeply connected to racial justice and social justice. Our district's commitment to anti-racist policies have included becoming more sustainable as a district.
Electric alternatives, this is what I'm talking about. ICSD's investment in electric buses is great for the environment overall because it produces less fossil fuels. In addition to this change, we also suggest that the ICSD replace, uh, maintenance equipment that's phasing out our retiring and vehicles that are retiring, vans that carry stuff around with electric ones.
So not only would these changes have a lasting impact on our school in relation to climate change, in the long run, they would also be financially beneficial.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and for your consideration. We are grateful to be heard, excited to work with you, and empower ourselves as well as our community in meaningful steps to address the climate crisis. Any questions?
After that phenomenal presentation, questions, please. Oh, you're not going to get out of here, so. Mr. Harris.
I have one question on this right now, I'm sure I'll think of others. Do you guys have a sense of, or have you thought of, of any spaces we currently have that are paved over? Are we could do without? In other words, changing our salt spaces back to green spaces would be helpful if we could get some ideas. I know that's not something, do you guys talk about that facilities ever?
Um, we will now.
But, you know, push us, come up with a list of things you guys are aware of, thanks.
Warren, can I see your hand?
Did Chris have a hand? So I want to give you this.
The hand up on the table.
Oh, okay, uh, that's right, um, so can you, uh, give us a, a sense of, and maybe you don't know right now, but, um, what amount and where of composting is happening? What amount and where is recycling happening? And what amount and where are there gardens at our schools?
That's a great question. So I know for one, um, there's a composting initiative being taken at Falk Creek Elementary School. ACS as well, um, recycling, I believe it's not, um, really happening at Ithaca High School. Um, I'm not sure about other schools, other people would like to talk about that. I know Boynton for a while had a composting initiative.
Northeast.
Yes, please.
Uh, I am aware of, uh, uh, garden at Swet's Middle School, which is where I went to.
Right.
And also, um, I, the name alludes me, but one school in our district, I believe, moved to, uh, compostable, um, plates for lunch, which would make a step in the right direction.
You stole it from me, I also went to Swet Middle School.
There's also, um, a couple of spaces at IHS that I know, there is a garden, um, by the cafeteria area in this little like square, but it's just not really utilized. Yeah, anyway, it's there.
So, question, but the preface to that is, as a finance committee member, I can tell you, like, the money just doesn't grow. I wish we could throw money at that right now and do all the things you asked. But that doesn't happen, and so in a lot of the work we do, we talk about like how we can do policy change or this change or that change. And all I can think of is wondering if you all have considered taking what you're doing and educating younger students. So for instance, Northeast has composting and recycling, but a lot of times if you go there, the students don't understand why that is important, and so they don't make the effort to actually put the right things in the compost. And I'm just want, like, things like that or refilling a water bottle and how that could, you know, have all the clear water. Have you considered, like, taking what you're doing and making an effort to educate our elementary and middle school students?
I really like that.
I think we will now.
Uh, Karen and Karen.
So just a point of information, I, um, did not our facilities, uh, committee authorize an energy audit a number of years ago, comprehensive? Were we entered into an energy contract?
We went through what was called an energy performance contract, EPC, where we tried to, uh, incre- significantly increase the energy, uh, both consumption and waste of a number of our buildings. Amanda, you wanted to say a couple of quick sentences about that EPC contract.
Absolutely, so, so, um, remember there was like a global pandemic after that all happened, so the data may not be exactly the best, right? Uh, but what that did was, right, if we replaced building envelopes, um, windows, uh, boilers, um, uh, roofing units that were a little bit more efficient, we did, uh, bigger, um, equipment, right, that would have been inefficient, we're looking, we looked at the kitchens and redid work there. I know I'm missing things. Um, and then the whole goal was to try to sort of, I, I'm going to use the word, challenge our comfort, right? So like maybe make the buildings a little cooler than usual in the winter and a little warmer than usual in the summer so that we're not running our systems, uh, you know, just to that energy piece. But Armin and I, we've talked a lot about, um, trying to get some energy audits and see where we are and what we can do more specifically with the partnership with all of you. I am, I am all on it and I am happy to share those data reports, but again, like, let's use a lens of like what we've experienced when we look at that data. Also, we have an assertive, um, benchmarking system and a dashboard that we have, uh, a, we can actually give that, the sort of the district password. It's like just a kind of a global opportunity for us to look at those things. And you can look at all the buildings and you can look at the usage and then they can track that we're going to use that in Enfield. Um, thank you for mentioning the work that we're going to be doing over at Enfield, um, moving, moving that system away from boilers and fossil fuels, right? Um, into, into a much worse environment, so, um, yes, we'll be using that in many ways.
And just to finish off the point to Eric's point, that was a little bit more than nine million dollars of investments into the facilities to try to make that happen.
That is correct.
Also trying to be wise with our finances, so, um, it may be time for us to take another look at what we can do again, so that's fantastic. Karen, I know.
Yes, um, I commend you all for having walking meetings, moving while doing business, so that's good and, um, last week, the beauty about being on the board is that we're connected with other committees at times, and last week the facilities committee heard from Northeast Elementary School, their sustainability group, and the numbers that they were going through of how many cartons of milk go into the recycle bin and what grade levels are composting and so forth. So it would be really beneficial for us as a whole district to connect with the different schools and have a session or I, I leave it up to you, I can't tell you what to do exactly, but, um, but do connect because there are some schools out there that's doing um, some good work on this already and for us to just come together as a collaborative group, thank you.
Uh, it's my understanding that, um, Enfield, they've been doing an incredible job about trying to set some suspicion. And although they do get some district backing and they do get some funds from there, a lot of their stuff is, they reach out, they partner with people individually, they make the community effort and they get the children involved in it, so even if the district were to say, I don't know, reach out to like a lumber company and ask if they have any extra lumber that they could use to make beds for plants, or even if you guys, it's like a big, I don't want to say corporation, but like big entity could be like, hey, we have this idea. I think that could help a lot of schools accomplish small goals that are in the long run really big.
A not-for-profit educational institution will take, not corporation.
Yeah. I said not corporation.
I could, I could. I'm going to take the unusual.
But very powerful.
Thanks. I'm going to take the unusual step and acknowledge off the floor, so I see the, I see your hand up.
Oh, thank you so much. So I was, uh, very fortunate to accompany this group to a Shokin Center for the, yes, um, summit. And I, great presentation and you guys hit a lot of the points that were discussed at that, at that weekend. Um, I want to, uh, just address the idea that there be a sustainability administrator that you brought up, which would be great because all these ideas that are passed around would live with one person, um, and they could bring it around, so. But as a taxpayer, I also go, hey, do we need another administrator, you know? So my question is, is there somebody who's already on staff who could add that to their job description? And I don't know what your name is, but you nailed it, so can it be used?
I, I was going to ask if you'd be the person that's filming this presentation. Good, but what response?
That's my comment, I think well.
Any other board or just?
So, we know that we have, I think, what's the average age of one of our buildings, sixty-some odd years old? So maybe substantial changes within the building, we've already started working on, but we know a lot of this is also habit driven. What do you think are the top five habits we can initiate with students and faculty to make significant change?
Recycling, composting, for sure.
It's a great, so, I think along with that, um, I learned a lot about auditing the school energy usage at our summit and, um, the teacher who presented that, Jacob Lawrence of Arlington High School, he, uh, mentioned that, um, just unplugging things and using, if you're using a power strip, even if you just turn it off, that vastly decreases the amount of energy that's being used, right there. Because even if things are plugged in but are not turned on, they're still using energy, right, so, but.
And it's called ghost energy.
It's ghost.
Yeah, strangely enough, it's called ghost energy, even if you have one part plugged, unplugged, and you have the other part plugged into the wall, it's still putting through and that's ghost energy, that's not being, but there's still a problem there.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, so first, like, really great job on the presentation, um, I really like all of the, I, uh, like your proposal plans and I recognize a lot of it is kind of on the district to implement, like the auditing. Um, have you guys met with Mr. Trumbull yet? No, okay, so I feel like, um, some of your proposals, such as like composting or like making more garden spaces, it could be good if we do that within our school. And I guess not to put more on Mr. Trumbull's point, but it would be, I think, really great if we met with him and kind of did all that at IHS, and I think it'd be good for the students.
I can make that happen, yeah.
Lots of support for sustainability.
Last one, um, question, another question, so, uh, in this position, other positions, I mean, we keep hearing about in fact, that we may, as a country, have bumped up into, onto our, into our ceiling, we're going recycling. It'd be great if you guys could actually school us on that, because everything I hear is, we've tapped out, can't do anything with the general except it. Where are we actually in terms of our capacity to cycle large amounts of material, the way we reproduce as a. Cycle large amounts of material the way we reproduce as a school and have it not wind up. We don't want it to wind up.
That's pretty much this. And I don't have specific information on it, but last year in um environmental science, um the class, which is a great class, we learned um about the outsourcing of our recycling to China and the that like system kind of shut down and um.
So come back and.
We don't have a lot of industry.
Come back and teach us.
So that's what I know about it. And um it's interesting because recycling requires a lot of energy also. Um so the the best step is to reduce our like using water bottles and I mean it's easy.
I forgot my water bottle.
I think it's important to remember that there's a lot of like systems in place that make like widespread change feel really challenging. Um but that's like to not lose hope in like little.
Right.
We have to pack or slightly bigger ways, like community projects.
Now our last one.
Oh, yeah. Um I just appreciate that there's a group of dedicated students at IHS who are um trying to push this forward. Um I just had one thing that I think is interesting that I learned a while ago. So I think there's like a little bit of recycling going on at IHS. Um I'm pretty sure most things do not get recycled, but there might, I'm fairly sure that uh some things do. So I think that some of the infrastructure for recycling is already there. It's just that a lot of the classrooms don't have recycling bins and then recycling bins get contaminated. So and I think some of that is like students still know. So yeah, I think somebody mentioned earlier student education and stuff is important.
Well, this has been a phenomenal presentation. I think I'll add, right, to the students, to the district, individual schools. I know as an educator, I find myself walking around buildings at Ithaca College, simply turning off projectors. And so to teachers and educators, one thing we can do is between periods, at the end of the day, I have a new term, I've never heard of ghost energy before, that is fantastic. But I know I find at my institution that there are rooms that are empty with just projectors that are on all day long. So um I'm gonna be thinking about this for a while. Thank you greatly. We look forward to having you all come back. Continue to educate us and as Mr. Harris said, continue to push us and hold us accountable to make these changes as well. So thank you greatly.
Probably you have a good job.
When uh when Grace speaks.
Thanks. Thank you greatly. Greatly appreciated. Fantastic.
Dr. Breckwell, so folks are leaving. Before you go, I do want to say that um you don't have to stay for the whole budget presentation. But in the budgets for next year, we do have the model that we use for equity mentors, for sustainability mentors at every single building. So there will be teacher stipends for every single building to be able to do equity and to do in building work. So that's super exciting. And also in the proposal for proposition two in the budget, um we are asking for five electric buses and all of the infrastructure to support that. So we're also incorporating chargers in Enfield and Caroline in the capital project work that's gonna be happening. So we hear you and we're gonna keep moving forward on it. So thank you.
We are moving on to the next agenda item, which is uh eleven point two. The two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget presentation.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Dr. Breckwell, for letting me do that too. I wanted to let folks know. So um what we what we have here is uh similar to finance committee, but we've sort of rearranged the slides. And what we'll do at the same time is actually refer everyone to the three-part budget document, which is the line item. It's also in board docs. So um I if you already have board docs open, um there are paper copies that we can sort of make sure that student reps get them as well. And if you have an extra um for folks, can you mind? Great, great. If you have it on board docs, just wanna make sure. I wanna just uh start with with the calendar. Um and I think that this is super important, right? So we've had some snow episodes. Um I don't know.
On Tuesdays.
Uh and they happen to happen on Tuesdays. So I don't know who's putting that message out there, but you know, for the budget developers, this is not good. So we actually had to cancel a couple of meetings where we were really gonna do some deep dives in the budget. Um and so I wanna make sure that we do a really good job of being as transparent as possible, but also mindful of time, right? Um we recognize that we're getting started at ten after eight, and so this can be as long or as short as everybody wants it to be. And then you all know that um you probably sensed I'm I'm not from around here originally, and so I can talk faster in a very comfortable place. Barbara knows. Um right, so we're here, right? We're the twenty-eighth. We have a finance committee happening where we're gonna have two special education and technology present. We'll do a deeper dive. And then on April eighteenth, that's budget adoptions. Um so so you know, we always have the opportunity to create more meetings for us, but uh spring break is sort of in there. Um you know, so that makes it a little bit more difficult. So we wanted to make sure we tried to get information out to you now so that we could really review this. So um what you see before you in this line item budget will align with uh the information that we're gonna be talking about after the reminder of revenue, right? So um just a reminder that we are a district that is really driven by our taxpayer dollars, right? This is the primary source of our revenue coming in. We will be asking if the board approves to go out at the tax cap, um which actually will equate to a decrease in the rate this year. We've worked with Jay Franklin from the county assessment office, we're anticipating that that rate will go down over forty cents per thousand. Um so that's actually a very good thing um for us. So although we'll be at the cap and the levy will go up, the rate will go down. State aid um increased from last year this year, and again, that makes up about a quarter of the budget. And then other revenue are things like uh the returns from BOCs of the monies that are unspent, right? It's um Medicaid reimbursements, it's the way that we invest our money and all the the interest earnings that we get on those investments. And then also, we're gonna, this this picture here doesn't quite get us to the total. So we will dip into fund balance just a little bit more than we did last year, but we are allocating reserves for that. Specifically, one um that we haven't used before, which is the health insurance reserve, because we know that there are gonna be changes to retiree health, and that's exactly what our reserve is there for. We don't know quite yet what the impact might be. And so then that way it gives us a little bit of an opportunity to be able to make the decisions that are um you know, coming our way and we might not know about yet. So there'll be a couple of reserves, a bit of fund balance, and then mainly coming from the taxes. So with that said, we go from the revenue side, that's the money coming in now to the money going out, right? And so these are gonna be larger overviews of many items. So the first couple of slides you're going to see are aligned with what's called the program budget, right? The instructional budget, the things that are almost direct services to young people that impact kids, impact teachers, okay? So you're gonna see a lot of line items that are in this line item budget that are about instruction. So you'll see from curriculum to teaching regular school, students with disabilities, um right? And it goes on to all of the mental health supports and related services that are there, um OTPT, school libraries, athletics. You'll see health services all the way down through transportation, um garage buildings, and then all the benefits there too. So a lot of the slides that I have align with that first part of the program budget. Biggest part of our budget is the instructional pieces, right? So if you were to take um the instructional line items, add them all up, and again, they're not gonna go absolutely line by line. Cause some of these elements of the budget gets separated into the other parts, which are administrative and capital. But the majority, if it falls into this category, I tried to list it under the program budget, okay? And so instruction, as you can see, is going up. Just so you know, um remember, there's a lot of drivers for our budget. Um we have negotiated bargained agreements with uh with all of our unions. And so in this grouping, you often see folks from ITA, the Ithaca Teachers Association. They'll be getting a salary increase of about um per person, two thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars next year per person. Um that's a percentage, we calculated that during negotiations, that equates to about four, four and a half percent of the salary at that time. Um and that also increases the um starting salary for teachers as you come into the district. And then um IPDA, which is the Principals and Directors Association, they'll get a three percent increase. Um and ESP, which is our educational support professionals, they'll also be getting a three percent increase. Employees Association, which typically isn't listed in the instruction except for transportation, they're getting a minimum of five percent increase and upwards, um for some groups, upwards of actually thirty or forty percent. Those are nurses and bus drivers and things. They got, bus drivers got about twenty percent, nurses got about forty percent increases from last year. So this is the instructional piece. Again, as you can see here, this is sort of a lot of salary. It's also supplies and materials, it's equipment, um it's the ability for us to be able to do our instructional components of our job. Employee benefits often, right, are attached to salaries, right? That's what comes with our people. You give them retirement and they get health insurance and they have dental and vision workers compensation. So the employee benefits pieces are listed here and grouped together. And that also is, we actually, because we're using some fund balance, we were able to kind of allow not as a huge increase as we needed um that we were anticipating. And also, we did look at that and say some of it was a little bit over um funded. And so we we right-sized that. So you'll see the benefits line, um and and you'll be able to identify each of those benefits on your line item budget. Transportation, again, like I said, a lot of this is salary. A lot of this is the salary increases to our people, okay? And so this the transportation budget includes not just the people, but there's clerical staff and there's phone systems and there's software systems. The good news about um the the transportation budget, and we have Liz Berner, our director here, she'll be talking about the e-buses if if necessary as we get there. Um the good news about this is that um we really actually are able to kind of look at trends and in um in cost. And we know that as we hire staff, right, um a lot of times that helps with overtime costs and things, cause we have more people to do more routes. And therefore, that actually is a a really positive thing for the department. So that is an expected change here. Operations and maintenance is also a really key part. Now this, it gets into the capital part of the budget. So before I do that, I'm gonna stop at transportation and I'm just gonna switch over to this line item budget here for just a second and the program sections. Well, so it really is, it's the it's the first, second, third and fourth pages. And it goes pretty much down to sort of the, you know, that the middle of the or the sort toward the bottom of that fourth page, right? If there's any noticeings or wonderings about any of those line items, what we try to do here is we try to um anticipate what those might be. So if the percentage is really high or really low, if the dollar amount change is really high or really low, we try to really give a little bit of description underneath that line item so that people can understand um what's happening in that line and why that looks the way it does. Remember that this is not the only source of money. Remember that we also have, as Pat mentioned, title funds that come in, right? Grants, federal and state grants. A lot of times when we do a budget, it is our opportunity to recode, meaning that we take it out of this budget and move it to that other budget so that the salaries are completely within the title grant and that person can get paid. And so you wanna leverage those grants as best you can. So you'll see a lot of cleanup here. You'll also see sometimes things that are increases, they're inflated, because last year's budget was was in development and decisions weren't made at that time. So this year's budget has to catch up with the decisions that were made last year as well as going into next year. So sometimes you'll see those double impacts. You see that a lot with salary lines when we're not settled on contracts. And so you'll see things that looks like, wait a minute, did they get this kind of increase? Well, no, actually, it's last year and this year. And that's what I was referring to with the buses and the nurses. You're gonna see those sorts of increases, okay, over the in this budget document.
So are we taking any questions on those first four pages?
I would love to take questions.
So two questions that I have about those first four pages.
Yep.
I see college at some.
Yep, love it.
One um budget item to eight one five health services.
Mm-hmm.
Um there's a significant increase.
Yep.
Should I presume that that is also the the negotiated contractual increase to salaries of our nurses?
That is correct. That is all nurses.
Fantastic.
So everything health service there is everything that has to do with the nurses' offices and all the services there too. It is not mental health, like psychology, social work, right? This is actual physical health of students.
So what if we should work together more often? What if Fantastic Lead did, which was about psychology and social work services? Um we hear frequently that schools need to be providing additional services for students. It looks like we have a fairly significant increase in our psych psychological services and our social work services.
That is correct. That is correct. So um Mary Grover, and again, I don't wanna call on folks that they all knew that they were gonna sort of be ready to go if necessary, right? So Mary Grover, I don't, I don't, you don't even have to talk about it. I'm just gonna give you credit, Mary. Um Mary did an amazing job anticipating the needs of young people coming back from COVID and worked with the special education department, specifically Jennifer Fonda, the director there, to enhance mental health services and supports, right? So what you're seeing here is the budget, A, catching up to that staffing, and B, absorbing all of the creations of the positions that we used, those the COVID monies, for lack of a better term, for. This, they have to come back here now, because that money is now gone. And it is, it is a structure and a support that we wanna continue. And so we have to find a place in the general fund to be able to fund it. That is why you are seeing those large increases in those line items, because if it was able to be paid for by COVID dollars, we coded it there last year. And so if you go on the website and you look at the budget docs from last year, this same budget document is there and it would say recode to special aid, recode to special aid. Special aid is the funding that lives with all the grant monies. This is general fund, special aid is the grant monies.
Or college questions we have, Jill and Karen.
Yeah, I um.
It seems to me, I saw when looking at the district website today, that there was, they were, we were looking for one full-time equivalent and it said psychologist at Enfield, school psychologist. Is that correct or we haven't? Okay.
Yes, we we had a resignation, so we're.
And there was somebody full-time at Enfield?
Yes, yes.
This this is where I struggle with the nitty-gritty of things, okay? And then that's um in in my experience, there was never a full-time.
Mary.
Yeah. And Mary, you certainly know Enfield.
Yes.
Um I worked at Enfield as a school psychologist for a period of time. Um and I'm just, I I don't think our other schools have full-time, with the exception, of course, of the high school. Um who else has a full-time school psychologist?
So Caroline Elementary School has a full-time.
Uh-huh.
Belle Sherman has full-time. We also have a full-time at Cuba Heights Elementary School.
A full-time school psychologist.
South Hill.
Well, let me just say. Things have gone to hell since I left her out here. Um it on one hand, professionally, I think that's wonderful. On the other hand, I find it hard to believe, given that I think those schools were well-covered with shared school psychologists for many years. Now either the profession has changed a great deal, um or one might argue that the needs have changed a great deal, but which again, I'm gonna be a little bit skeptical of. I I'm willing to agree that they changed some. And I wonder what the forum is for us to look into, given that any of my colleagues are interested in this. What what's the forum for us to look into? Um.
Well, it could be curriculum.
Committee.
Curriculum committee and also Jennifer Gondik will be presenting.
At finance.
At finance.
Okay, so that's coming up, where we can hear the the rationale for that.
Yeah, and student funds and.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're happy to. That it might make sense to do a curriculum, because we're talking about social learning. We're also talking about the better health needs of kids. So I hear you say that, Jill, and my brain automatically starts spinning, well, when Sean and I decided right before in two thousand nine, graduation rate after American kids was fifty percent. And it was a lot of the American kids at IHS. So I I that's ripe for discussion, right? To what extent?
Yeah.
Does one actually uh interact with the other?
Well, yeah, and to what extent does adding more school psychologists?
And get get the results.
Get the result that we're looking for. And I have some serious questions about that. Yes, as school psychologists.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's why we need you.
Okay.
Karen.
Yes, um around after the pie chart, you um Amanda, you said the slides align with the program budget and you'd said OTPT. And my clarification on what that acronym stands for, I was trying to figure out is.
Oh.
Occupational therapy.
Yes, O in occupational therapy and physical therapy. So those are. So those are all related services, they may or may not, we may be able to get Medicaid reimbursement on those services depending on. On the students' needs and if they are a high need student, we actually fill that paperwork out and then we get reimbursement on them, that's part of the revenue. Yep.
Additional questions, folks, may I?
This is more of a big picture question, um. It feels like it was yesterday, but I know it was pre-COVID where we were talking about utility taxes and worried about the budget. And now everything seems fine.
Oh, Erin.
No, I mean, I I wonder what, so I mean, I guess this year it feels okay, right? But I wonder what we're gonna be talking about next year and I wonder as we look through line items. Like I I wish we could give everything, but like, should we be more cautious about what we're doing, given the economic climate? Given that everything, I mean, I I just, give me your insight as a guru.
Oh Erin, I just so appreciate you.
I really do. I mean, we talk about this all the time, right? And there's there's timings and there's um thoughtfulness about the how and the when, right? And so I'll 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 answer it as briefly as I can, right? I am always thinking about long-range planning. Last year, when we asked our community to support us to go over the tackle cap. That was part of the answer to your question, right? And you we cannot do that every year. And I feel like when we looked at the long-range planning that allowed us for this year and next year. And then in year three, we'll start thinking again about what does this look like as we enter into negotiations. Right? The when you have the volume, right? And and you want to give everything to everyone, those two things live actually at odds with each other. And so you have to start to think about those things. This is a living, breathing document, this is again, I cannot stress this enough, a moment in time study. This is going to give us flexibility, right? If we miss things that need to be pulled back from COVID, if there were initiatives that came up that the board said, oh my goodness, that that goat thing. Let's write, this gives us a little flexibility, but also we are having conversations with principals, with directors, right? With staff to say, look, we think this could be done more efficiently. And we're already having them, even though this is in your hands, right? We understand that this is going to most likely be something that we'll be modifying because that's just the way like this. You look at our transfers all the time as part of consideration of accounts, right? As part of our finance committee, those transfers are real because tho- those are modifications and agility in motion, right? That's what that is. So to answer your question, am I worried? Yeah, that's my job. My job is to be worried all the time about this stuff. Am I processing with my amazing colleagues about strategies, right? Um so that we never have to come to you with the sky is falling? Absolutely, all the time. They are so patient and kind with me, I can't even tell you. And they all say it without me even being in the room. Um and I think that the finance committee, right, talking about all the ways that we do that the. We get kind of into like the the behind the clock phase, right? Like making sure all that stuff aligns, that's where that work happens all year long. Um so do I anticipate um next year, like looking at this saying like, you know what? This was the ways that we built some efficiencies from last year, this year, absolutely, I would hope that we could be able to do that. You'll see some efficiencies in here, we we actually trimmed some lines where there were fund balances built in. Reserve sort of like built in there that I was like that, I looked at the five-year trend, she can't look at COVID. And I'm like, this is unnecessary, right? Let's use fund balance the way it's meant to be very transparently and let's cut that back in the budget. So that's where this year I tried to make those efficiencies.
Right, and so when the contract and we're negotiating, that's a whole other ballgame that we need to.
Right, that's where I'll do all my long-range planning grass for you, right? If we want to make this decision, this is the impact. If we want to make this decision, this is the impact. We want to make this decision with this number of staff, this is the impact, right? That's the that's the work that we all do, for sure.
Erin, I'll humbly add similar to Jill's question, this is a proposal, we decide.
Absolutely.
What, right, so this is saying in the best interest with our professional and you know expertise, here's what should happen. Um like I think part of the, correct if I'm wrong, part of the question behind your question is hearing from a number of taxpayers. The significant tax burden that happens in this community.
Yeah.
Right? School trip tax, city tax, town tax, county tax, state tax, name it. And so how are we balancing and being efficient so we're just not throwing money out there? But actually providing the best education and keeping the impact on taxpayers in mind.
I mean, people are hurting, I would hate to ask to have anyone pay more.
Right, and so I think that's the balance we're trying to find. The state of the excellent school district provides support for me for folks while simultaneously had my alarm go off.
I think with that being said, we need to seriously start pushing out there the conversation about pushing Albany on how. Our school districts are funded. You know, because several people said this over the years, this is not sustained. And we are, you know, our taxpayers support this school district, we're going, our state aid is not there. So we need to start having that conversation because. Looking down the road, there's there's going to be significant increases, you can't buy yourself and say it's not gonna happen. Um and I don't care how many efficiencies you put out there, it's not gonna shore it up. I'm not being doom and gloom, I'm just being honest, right, so.
Additional questions?
We're we're, it's ominous, you know. US has been, you know, seen this cycle for how long? Hundred and twenty years? Tighten your screws on private citizens, they leave the area, right? It's called white play, I don't know what to call it now. Uh there's a different demographic in an urban school district, the state has to then fill in the gap. I don't know how you break that stuff. That's one reason we joined the board, we knew we were balancing academic excellence with um the capacity for people to continue to live. In this district and and see their children be successful. That's that's, that's the reality we live in, I don't even know what to say, I'm a realist. Amanda's working with the leadership and with all your good work on finance, that's what we're trying to control.
If you missed it, but if I thank Eldridge for the addition of the pie chart breaking down. One of the biggest conversations we have is how we present this in a manner to the public. You know, that's easy to follow and understandable, the captions, the the timeline. And this has been evolving over the last four, five years, you know.
Right, FAQ?
FAQ, transparency, understanding, breaking down the line item budget and talking about three years trend. Uh because not everything is a snapshot, well, everything is truly a snapshot in time. So when you're looking at it, you're not looking, what got us here in this one line was probably two years in the making, so.
So I know this is not commendation time, but also thank you to you, Chris Malcolm, as chair of the finance committee. Because we want to remind the community that this is a year-long budget process. So some of the conversations we may not be getting into depth this evening. Because we've had extended conversations for a couple of months prior as well. So we will continue a year-long budget process, three-year outlook, five-year outlook as well. And it still is going to come down with difficult conversations, so. Yes, Joe, please.
So so back to your comment about this being a proposal and and back to Amanda's comment about this being a living document. Um the last time I was involved in a big budget was with the city's Department of Public Works years ago. And what what we did at that time was we asked each department had to come to us. With a a zero increase budget, a five increase, a five percent increase budget and a minus five percent increase budget. And and talk with us about what that would mean, and I'm not saying we need to do that this year. Because obviously a lot of work has gone into this, but I would like us to be able to identify things in here that are of lower priority. Because um I I think harder times are coming and um and I think many, many people in this city are at the breaking point. Um and I I hear what Chris says and I agree about finding, you know, getting better state funding and 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 other sources. But uh each, a lot of people have had it. And if we look at this compared to an austerity budget, for example, this looks pretty good. And I don't and I don't want to get into the position, I feel like we're close to the position in some of these areas after looking at them carefully. Of throwing money at a problem maybe without looking carefully enough about whether the money is going to solve the problem. Now, that's a concern, it's it's not a summary statement and I I'm willing to be persuaded, but I would like to be persuaded.
Yes, I could I could say as someone who are playing Chris's role of finance for a long time. Every year I know we've asked leadership, we've asked our leadership to go to building. And they spend a quite a month, quite a bit of time. Uh narrowing down the answer to the question you asked, what's essential, what's necessary, what's desired? And that is, I'm proud to say, if you look over the last, I think it was last year or maybe two years ago. We did a report covering the last eleven years of our district budget. Every year we were either, we were, I don't think we exceeded. Two point three percent increases except for the two rich stories in the years, right? And six, seven years in a row, we have actually reduced the burdens of taxpayers. Which doesn't matter to taxpayers ultimately because they still get that assessment from the county and their rates still go up, so.
Their rates don't go up.
I'm sorry, not the rates, the rates go down. Rates go down and assessments go up, so we've we've done our job, we've held our line, we can always do better. Uh but it would be maybe be useful to have new members of the board see that. Basically, see how fiscally responsible we have tried to be by asking the people who have budgetary power. And they have been, they have been coming back with some miraculously efficient things, it's really good ideas. Using community partners more and consolidating efforts, so there's always more tact to train. But uh but to your wondering. Finances of this district have been a good answer a long time. Not that you can't always do better.
So I'm gonna suggest we finish the presentation, we're gonna have a couple more conversations about the budget. It will give board members and the community a chance to sort of engage a little bit more in-depth as well. But let's finish the presentation and then see what we find ourselves.
Right, that's great, that's absolutely great. So my apologies, this is actually should be later on, um operations and maintenance actually falls under the capital part of the budget. And so that's that's the very last page. I'm gonna say that um we had, we had uh the team from facilities, so um. Heather Williams present at multiple meetings about the budget. So I think that we've really covered that if folks have questions, they can definitely go um to look at both the facilities committee last week. And then the finance committee the prior month, okay? Um the technology budget, Zach is coming on Thursday, April sixth, so we can ask him questions. The technology budget, there are two areas of that, one that falls in the capital, the very last page. And then one, I'm sorry, the second to last page, and then one that actually falls um in the program budget. So the codes are twenty-six thirty, which is the bottom of page two. And then also um it is number, let me just get that right, sixteen eighty. And sixteen eighty is on the top of the second to last page. So those two work in tandem, so you often see a decrease in one and then an increase in the other. Because that's moving away from BOSEs and moving inside ICSD or vice versa, okay? Board of Ed, just as a reminder, this is not representative of the people around the table minus Tricia. And all of the things that you do as board members in terms of being able to get training and get. Uh have to go to Albany, that's required, all of your requirements fall in this. Um and so all of the election costs fall in this, our board members are volunteers. This is not a salary line for board members, I want to be super clear about that. All right, debt service, debt service is capital part of the budget toward the end of the budget document. This is how we are paying for things that happened upwards of fifteen years ago to present day. That energy performance contract you mentioned, that's part of this, right? And all of the other capital work that we had done, not future ones, those are bands and bonds, we have some of that. But those, it really is about payments of of prior years. Inner fund transfers, you're gonna see a decrease, please do not be alarmed, this is actually really good news. Pre-K, actually, somebody analyzed that formula and said, Ithaca, you're underfunded.
Imagine that.
So in special aid fund, their monies went up, that supplanted the money that the general fund was actually sustaining and supporting the pre-K program. So the program's not impacted, it's still robust, it's fantastic. And we're able to actually decrease the burden on the taxpayer because it was funded better where it should be, which is really great. We also know that school nutrition because of COVID, alright, it's, there's rare that you can see some sort of positive. Actually, the money, the revenue that the school nutrition fund was getting was very robust. And we actually were able to decrease the support of the general fund and taxpayers to that program as well, okay? The administrative budget, so administration is not instructional. So there are my colleagues in the room that are in the instructional side of the budget. There's one of my colleagues in the room who is not in the room. Um and then there is other folks here at our offices that support the business and human resources administration side. Of the house of of the district, right? And so this is everything from auditing and payroll and BOSEs and the insurance and tax items and communications, right? This is all of those sorts of pieces um that support the school as business, right? BOSEs administration, I do not actually want to talk about this this evening very much. Cause I think that there are folks in the room who understand how complicated this dialogue was. So we have a write-up for folks that we're gonna be putting in an FAQ for everyone to explain. Um why this BOSEs administration cost is going up this high? And it has to do with their borrowing, their borrowing costs are up, right? And so what they believe though is that that borrowing, although that interest is up. They'll invest that money and then hopefully the money they give us back from that interest will sort of weigh itself out. So essentially you have to spend more to save more. I hope that I summarized that in a way that was effective.
People could also look at um last week's, last week's or two weeks, those finances.
If you want to, that's right, but we're gonna write up a, we're gonna write up.
Because that was an, I thought that, I understood that and I thought that was really helpful when the BOSEs folks came and spoke with the finance committee about.
It it was definitely thorough and I thank you all so much as board members to really ask the questions that you did. And really help get that messaging to a place um that we could really educate our community. And then also have confidence in what you're voting on, right, as a board. You will have to vote on this separately from our budget and it's also in our budget, so those are two pieces.
When do we vote on that?
Oh, that happens the week of April twenty-something, right, twenty-third, twenty-fifth, something, twenty-fifth, I think something like that, okay?
And you also mentioned a meeting on April sixth with Zach.
April sixth is the finance committee, special education, Jennifer Gondak, Zach, technology. And then, yes, Eldridge and pie charts, right? So we've done dollar bills, we've done pie charts, I think our goal is to always try to create visuals. I I mean, even the presentation itself, right, trying to just group things so that people don't have to look line by line. Maybe they get a snapshot that aligns with our audit report, they can look at those things, that's what you just saw. And so this is actually an overview of the proposed expenditures. People, 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 right, like this is what we spend our money on. Um this is our BOSEs portion, right? The other is supplies, materials, equipment, um and then debt service.
Can I just say something, so again to Jill's point? That seventy percent of salaries and benefits hasn't really moved that much either, that's been consistent.
It grew, yeah.
Oh wow.
You mean the percentage, the percentage of the total budget?
Percentage of the total budget.
The total has stayed the same, of course, every year.
That's right.
But our commitments go up, but that's another place where we could actually look at the ins and outs. What's come out, what's gone in, how's that been, how how is that consistent percentage shifted over time?
And again, please remember, when we do this for the past couple of years, you're going to have to consider what we coded to COVID money. That we now have to bring back into our general fund. We anticipated this, we knew this was gonna happen, right? So we knew that we were gonna have to absorb this, um these funds that we use for things that we wanted to sustain. One other commitment, Eldridge, that you mentioned, and I want to just end on this. We did, when we went out for the twenty nineteen capital project, we committed to the voters that we would try to keep debt service within seven, seven and a half percent of the total budget. And so I think that this is a really good graphic as well to show that we're trying to maintain those commitments around um what we put into our capital in terms of long range planning. So what's next? I already showed you the calendar. Um we encourage folks to use Let's Talk. We encourage board members, you know, as you start to get questions from the community, if we can um start to get those to me, we have a very, very active website. It is ever changing. Our communications department is amazing at working with all of us in this room to um to answer questions as they come in. We will give information on this FAQ. It's a again, another living document that's kind of, you know, we add to it every single day. I'll be working on that. Uh follow-up questions, I encourage board members to come to Finance Committee. That's another opportunity for us to talk about it. On the eighteenth of April, Dr. Brown will be presenting the budget um to you. Uh if it if it needs to change, you would let us know, right, at Finance Committee after you're looking this through. Um but I we imagine that this is what this is what we would be proposing. Cause we've done a lot of work with all of our budget developers, principals, directors. We've had countless meetings um with all of them. And uh and then you would, that would be the budget you would propose to the community. And then we'll get started on more and more and more education. We don't have to stop talking about it. Um but if you do get grow tired of my voice, I can tag someone else in.
Oh, I, yeah, I just want to make the comment for Jill Smith and other newer members that when we, the last time we overrode the the budget cap a few years ago, was it last year?
Yeah.
Was there, was there one?
Yes.
Be be, no, there was.
Two thousand and thirteen. It was my, it was my first year here, Pat. It was a great, great year.
I tried to think back. I said, I think it was last year, but it was, it was what would happen like if we had.
Three different budgets.
That was last year?
No, that was twenty thirteen. Pat, I've been here, I'm gonna be here my tenth year. That was my first year.
We were in the years ago. Okay, so we we did have, when when there was this kind of funding, funding clip, when certain, when federal aid.
Gap elimination.
Gap elimination, Dustin, and Ara went away. Both those things went away.
So Dr. Brown did present three budgets to us. It was like, you know, zero percent increase or I I.
Was it negative?
It was a negative and.
A zero and then a little bit.
And what would disappear? And that was given to the board, not not, but not um department, department by department, but overall. And um I have shared concerns about low, no, trying to increase taxes as little as possible. But that year, what would have disappeared was like really shocking. And so that that was in that was in my mind that it was, it was, you know, when you look at the impact on kids of just about everything fund disappearing. And some necessary things too. Well, necessary as in not legally binding. But um so that that is a possibility for us as a board to look at. Very uh very scenarios, whether it could happen between now and April eighteenth, I don't know, but going forward.
We we can do whatever you'd like.
I'm just bringing up that it it has, it it has been presented to us at at one time.
Excellent.
And and when that kind of thing is presented, you have to actively engage in what the priorities are. You know, you can't, and I'm speaking from past experience here is you can't take what the people closest to it say, well, this will be gone if you choose this because they have a vested interest in keeping that. So they're gonna pick the thing closest to everyone's heart.
On the other hand, I'm sorry, on the other hand, then people are able to say, well, cut that because what value is that?
Right.
And they know nothing about that.
Exactly. So that's why it's important that more than one, yeah.
You know, just we've all, as I said.
Stop those conversations.
You did.
A long time ago, but we used to be here till eleven o'clock. And four o'clock AM arguing about that program for sixty thousand dollars versus that program. We killed that. We told our leader, best you can for all the kids, bring us that. And uh and and we think that's gone pretty well. I'll just add to Pat's comment about looking at those options. This, of course, we're here to serve kids. The options back here, look back for the babies. Moving forward with that would have had implications that we didn't look at specifically because I'm not sure how we could. But options such as, what is that, um change how our district is seen by real estate agents and people who are trying to sell people unlimited? And what will that do to equity we have in our home? So this is a, this is a, we have a large role to play. We're the largest taxing entity in this area by far. We gotta get credit to be politicians in any room. But the work we do is essential to keep many things afloat for this community. And again, I'm proud to have served my old and new colleagues and uh look forward to our best thoughts, just grinding this out going forward.
I want to try to keep us moving. Any additional questions? Thank you very much, man. Look forward to the.
Thank you all for the time.
The next six weeks of fun conversations. So here we go. Uh our next agenda item, if I'm following my agenda correctly, just twelve point one. Is that correct?
Yes.
Uh the resolution calling for the two thousand twenty-three annual district meeting and election of the Ithaca City School District and authorize authorizing related matters.
I move to approve the resolution calling twenty twenty-three annual district meeting and election of Ithaca City School District and authorizing related matters. Second.
Moved by.
Keep moving.
By Pat, second by uh Moira. Uh so right, so we can talk about what this is.
The right call in the. I see it, but.
It's it's a couple pages long and it's a legal requirement. I'll let Amanda speak to it if that works for you, okay?
I, and I just wanna thank Liz Brenna for being here, Director of Transportation. Um so, yes, this is a legal requirement uh for Tricia and for the Board of Education to give notice, do notice, right, out in the newspapers for a predetermined amount of time set set by state law to announce that there will be an election, to announce that there will be a budget vote, to announce that there will be propositions along with that budget vote, which Liz is here to chat about if you'd like. Um to announce where those polling locations are, to announce how to be an absentee voter. Um if you have a disability, right, all of the things that you would need to know about this election and this and this process. This is all required by law. So you'll see a lot of repetition, redundancy, but that is actually required. We actually work with BS and K to develop this. And the one thing that we do have some ownership of and we are so proud to show you is that proposition. Um Liz has been working tirelessly. Thank you to Dan Bryman. Thank you to um the folks at the Transportation Department. That has truck Tetra Tech led to many, many meetings um to get to this place, grant writing, rebate getting, all of those things. So.
So before we ask Liz any questions, just to make sure folks understand what we're doing, we're authorizing Tricia to notify our newspaper of record.
Correct.
Of when the election is and what the election and budget vote will be about. We are not setting the number right now other than Prop two, which we've decided on the number will, on the number of buses that we're gonna be looking at.
Right, Prop, Prop two is required when you, when, Prop one is the budget, right? That will come later when you adopt the budget. Prop two comes out of the capital reserve. And again, by law, when you spend out of the capital reserve, you need voter authorization. And if the requirement of this annual notice is that you alert the public about that decision making with the capital reserve. And so that's what you're seeing here. But the budget number in Prop one will come later.
So Liz, just to make sure we all understand what we're voting on, can you speak to what we're hoping to do with some of the money from Prop two?
Yes, thank you. So um we have engaged in um applying for the BW voucher fund through our manufacturer. And so we've been awarded some money for our first round of buses for our first two buses. And we've been already approved for that. We have a second application in that's we intend will be approved also. We'll be getting that back shortly. And uh by within the next two weeks, we will have our third application in for that fifth bus. Um so this has been probably the most, um you know, financially within our reach that we have seen electric buses because they're about four hundred fifty thousand dollars a piece. Um and so we're very hopeful that we'll receive the funding for this. We've already been put into a um geographical area that we think, you know, pre-qualified us to be um qualified for that. So that's great. And then we also, besides the five electric buses, then we are looking to purchase another three buses because we can't function off of just five buses with what we're doing. And so um we've proposed that we go with the three ultra-low admissions propane buses. If you guys can remember, right before I started here, the incentive wasn't obviously for the electric buses, but for propane buses back then, we had incentives. And so now, after this many years, that gap between the gasoline and the diesel and the propane has come much closer together. And so um in two thousand and twenty-seven, there'll actually be a different requirement by EPA. And the ultra-low will reach that right now. So we're hoping that um one will meet that EPA level for two thousand and twenty-seven right now. But these, when we get to legislation that was just passed um for two thousand and thirty-five, these will be some of our last buses in the fleet that are not electric. So we're still looking at um being good for the environment as well. We do have the um need for replacement of our smaller vehicles. And Dan might be able to jump in on this. We've had probably the most families qualified as McKinney-Bento this year. And so some of the smaller vehicles are definitely useful with that bringing back and forth um servicing those families. They are definitely older. Um I'd say close to about ten years. So we're looking at purchasing those to replace them. And then hopefully being able to keep them for two DOT cycles, which is six months. Get our state back on them and hopefully be able to roll them over to maintenance. And so we had that planned pre-COVID. COVID came. You know, our priorities changed a little bit, but we're hoping to get back to that. So I think that's.
I just wanna add, what can you vent over, folks, we may not be aware, is housing insecurity. So students are experiencing housing insecurity. This is why these smaller buses have been very helpful, the vans and faster vehicles.
And and those are alternate vehicle or alternate fuel vehicles as well, the smaller ones now.
These, these are gas right now. So the vans and um so we found a new contact at McGuire that does state contract work. And so we've been working with him. And right now, the minivans and the Suburbans are not offered electric. So this would be a gasoline vehicle.
Jill, we just don't have the infrastructure to support it at this point in time. I mean, we we are very fortunate. That's the other piece to this. And I just wanna say, we are also asking with the capital reserve, the way it's set up, to do some small infrastructure work. Um because we actually, if we go beyond this point, we're going to have to be doing a capital project where we're actually working with NICE to get additional transformers. We just don't have the electrical capacity um to be able to do that. So as much as we would love to think about the smaller vehicles, right now, we're just not there yet. So um so.
We're headed, we're working toward.
We are. I mean, I.
This is more than we originally talked about.
We are so happy with where we're at. And I will tell you, we are asking questions at the state level for both facilities planning and and transportation, but they are not ready to answer yet. They actually rolled out policy prior to us like before schools, telling just school districts how to do it, right? So we're ahead of the game.
Sure. I saw your hand. Did you get your question answered by Dr. Bren?
Yeah, I wanna know what the first one was.
Additional question. So tonight you would be voting on the purchase of the vehicles. That would be what we're agreeing to this year.
We're agreeing to put it to the voters.
Thank you. I agree. We appreciate.
No, it's just a reset. Go ahead. Spend that money.
It's a long night with back pain. So here we go. Any additional questions?
Well, I have a question about dates. So the um May ninth is when we do a public hearing at a regular board meeting. And then the following week, May sixteenth, is actually the um school board voting day.
That is, that is correct. And those are all, those those terms are all prescribed by law. You get to pick a date between this day and this day so many days prior to the budget vote. Um and so we try to align the calendar that exists with the requirements of the law.
Additional questions? Do we feel like we're ready? We'll call the question all in favor. It is unanimous, including Mira.
I included here. How many only last? I figured I'd take it down.
The motion was made by Pat. Thank you very much.
Right, yes.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you much. This brings us to, uh what I believe is our, uh well, I should make mention as a transition that in the next week or so, we'll be having a conversation about uh election and what the district has put in place for the upcoming two thousand twenty-three election. So please be on the lookout for that as well. There is a one-page here. We'll start putting out on the website. Um and I wanna remind folks that the Board of Education has nothing to do with the education, with the election or the budget vote. Even while ultimately we're the ones that approve it and adopt it and responsible for it. So that's coming soon. But.
Don't run.
We do not run it at all. And neither does anybody within the school district, unfortunately, except for the district clerk, which is an overwhelming task. Uh this brings us to our last agenda item for the evening, which is the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four academic calendar, open for discussion and adoption. So don't know what the best way to proceed if.
Don't we start with the?
Right, we can make, we can make a motion and then have a discussion. So entertaining motions.
I will move to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four academic calendar as presented.
Second.
Moved by Pat, second by Moira. Discussion, questions, conversation, Moira.
Well, we we have, as we always do, got comments through the Let's Talk portal, others. Um so a couple of things that I noted. Um let me just say, a big issue that comes up every year when people question why we have sad vacations or days off uh the way we have. And a huge factor in why we do is to align with the BOSEs calendar. Now, what's interesting, cause I was looking at the BOSEs calendar today, and um and they adopt their, they adopted this calendar on February first. So that was done deal by February first. My question is, um and I'm surprised, I have, it hasn't occurred to me before to ask this because it comes up every year. Um do we get input to the BOSEs calendar? Um is it through our representative to the BOSE board? Um and it might be good if we had some, we got some information prior to their adoption of the, of their calendar on what they're thinking and why they're thinking. Because when I looked at the BOSEs calendar, quite a few of the days that people on Let's Talk said, why do you have this often? You shouldn't have that often. It doesn't make any sense. BOSEs has it off. For instance, the the winter break in December. Um people have questioned us having our calendar draft, having December twenty-second, a Friday, and January one and two, a Monday and Tuesday. January one is is a legal holiday uh as part of that break. BOSEs has it. Um and they decided that February first. I should also say that a number of people were saying, you know, cut that break shorter and then, you know, do other things with it. On the other hand, there are people saying, love that long winter break. So, and this is what, you know, we just see all the time. You can't please everybody. Um so uh a couple of other things. I mean, some people uh commented on uh, you know, why do we have April tenth, a Wednesday, as a recess day? Well, if you look closely at the draft, April tenth is Eid out. Well, if you look closely at the draft, April tenth is Eid Al Fatiq, which is a very, very important holiday in Islam. Um, we can't say on our calendar that we're taking off, it's not legal that we're taking off for a religious holiday. But we can say this is a recess day and this is something that we also did with a day off that is next to Yom Kippur. Uh, and we did that last year. Um, so uh, and we've done, and we've talked about the fact that we've done this over the last couple of years. When students came to us and, and asked us to be uh more inclusive. Um, and, and we tried to hear that and to uh, to be responsive to that. And, you know, people asked about our, our superintendent conference day. It's October twentieth. BOSI's has a conference day that day. The other one, BOSI's has a, so we are very, very much aligned with the BOSI's uh calendar. Um, and, and we've talked to maybe somebody else, because I'm talking live, and say why, you know, it matters to our students. That we are aligned to the BOSI's calendar. Um, and uh, you know, when we always get the uh, the comments about why can't we align our breaks for taking the spring break better with Cornell? Cornell. Well, Sean pointed this out to me today when we're talking about it. Uh, Cornell employs thirty percent or.
About twenty-five percent, twenty to twenty-five percent of the county population.
Of the county.
County workforce.
And that, you know, we're, we're not even the, the entire of the county, the district. Um, that means there's seventy-five percent of people who don't work for Cornell.
I mean, knowing those people.
Yeah, right. Um, and so um. You know, I, somebody else talked about her kids are, are, um, and this is something that I realized too. Her kids go to school in Cuba County and their calendar is different. Well, so, you know, what's happening in Cuba County, do they align their calendar with their BOSI's? But our BOSI's doesn't align our calendar, our BOSI's calendar with the other BOSI's calendar, so. It's kind of a mess. I will say one comment that I really appreciated, it was a good note. That we are talking about the, uh, on the calendar is a half day for middle school um caregiver conferences. And the person appreciated that we are using the term caregiver, but says for the elementary conferences, it still says parent. And so we should be consistent and call that caregiver. I'll shut up, Pat.
Additional board comments, questions, discussions?
If it was Karen, Karen, did you ask about? From that we have input into uh. As a, as a representative to BOSI's, where I've been inputting the calendar, was that ever?
I don't remember.
No, I, I just said.
Maura just said it a second ago.
I just said it.
I said it a couple of weeks ago, right.
Well, you said it. It's funny, ask, do we actually have it?
Okay.
Oh, okay. Well, oh, I asked a few weeks ago.
I mean, the input I ran since through, we have a representative on the board.
The answer, we're all getting punch struck now. The answer is no. Never been asked anything about BOSI's calendar. I tell you what I do know, we just had this conversation at the last meeting. BOSI's had anyone time to serving over eight hundred students. It's actually a higher number than the population of the smaller districts. So I, I give them some. I don't wanna say negotiate traditional leverage, but. It'd be difficult for us to just try and do something. Not acknowledging that they have eight hundred students that we have ten. And the services they provide are the ones that we say are critical. That's why we pay for. Right, the PTEC program, the, the technology program, the, the special education program, the alternative school program. I'm learning how complicated they are. Still want to support our students, still want to support the parents and caregivers of this, of this district. And uh, that's important tension we're trying to resolve, which is why I made some progress.
Additional comments, Jill, and then Eric.
I'm, I'm ready to vote on this, but before everyone dashes off, I have one announcement and one quick question, so.
Fantastic.
Don't let everybody go.
We will not, we'll, that'll be another business, Eric.
Good, just, I just wanna point something out. Um, and I'm not asking for this to be changed, but there is a population of caregivers' parents that when we see that word. We think of that separate role that we have caring for a medically complex kiddo. So I don't think there's anything to change, but I think when we use that term, we have to remember both parts of what a caregiver is for our families here in the district. Because some of our caregivers are medical caregivers as well, the parents. It's like a dual thing and it's very complicated.
Do you think some families have both parents and caregivers?
Well, the parent is a caregiver.
And sometimes, and some like.
And sometimes they have hired caregivers, but it, I mean, it's, it's a role that they play and it's complex and. Yeah, it's, you see that and you get a knee jerk reaction. You have to double think about it.
So to that complexity, Eric, just to add to it, there's also a number of families that they're raising children that are not.
Oh, no, that's, I understand that. That's what I mean.
Yes, we have to add that.
That's why I'm not asking to have a change.
I hear, right, it's a company for that. I wanna just add um a couple of things. One, I wanna reenforce the idea. Because we get the question every single year about merging with Cornell's spring break. In fact, I had a family member in my living room yelling at me about it. To which I said, well, what about if the college sprint rate, they didn't like that response? But a reminder, um, a reminder again that uh we are aware and one person asked and I get it. But the conversation, and I know our fearless team has significant dialogues with a number of institutions about how best to do this. We have to also bear in mind that a good portion of our income as a community comes from tourism, so that has an impact. I know Ethica College and Cornell are readily in conversation about which weekends to hold which events because there's not enough hotel space. You name it, right, that takes place. We are also bound by contractual obligations, terms of starting dates, ending dates, and New York State law. So, or New York State Ed Law. So the calendar is a complex process. And while folks may not always agree with the end result. Please trust that there are significant amounts of attention, time and thought that goes into how to put this puzzle together. And I'll repeat what Dr. Brown said, I think at one point in time, if you could find me the perfect calendar, please give it our way, right? It's a, it's a complex problem, process. It's not gonna work for everybody for that, we understand. It's not our intent. And the last thing I'll say, one person did say we're starting, ending later this year than they can recall. Um, with that being said, I am glad that the district has moved to acknowledge the holiday of Juneteenth. That is a federal holiday, and I think that's a good change for us as well. I am all of my. I'm back as board president. If any other questions. We'll call the question all in favor of adoption of this calendar. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We are on to other business and uh Jill, what do you have for us?
I have one announcement and that is uh today I, I began holding office hours on Tuesday afternoons. Um, and it is open listening to anyone who chooses to come and talk with me for a couple of hours about our schools. The next two will be held, the next two Tuesdays at the Ethica Coffee Company up at the small mall. This one's today was at a Green Star Market in the dining area. And uh, I had four visitors and it was very helpful and informative, so I hope. People will spread the word that anyone who wants to talk to a, a free school board member, um, I'll be available on Tuesday afternoons. And I'll uh try and keep people aggressive where.
I would ask that we try to communicate that to our communicates team and we can assist with getting that information out as well.
Great, thank you.
Very.
My, my other.
Oh, sorry. I apologize, July.
My other que, my question is to a, poor Bobby hasn't gotten out of here, so now he's on the spot again. What's going on with our retiring healthcare option, Bob? I'm getting questions and I'm curious too.
We should have the packets going out. To all retirees by April first. Our uh enrollment deadline is May first for Ja- July first start date. That's uh, that's the latest information I have as of this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Can you send an email to the board members, Bob, with that information? For those of us who are a little weary at nine o'clock at night, so we're supposed to remember that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Eric.
Oh, I was gonna say, um, I think, I think credible, where you're gonna, like, that up for the vacation. And if you want to make like a virtual option, because I know it's hard for some people because they live far away or maybe a little bit, I can help with that if you want.
That's a lovely offer. Thank you.
Great. If there's no other business. We will bring the meeting to a close. Thank you all very much for a productive evening.